Very good to know.
Thank you, Jeff. I'd like to call to order the special meeting of the Aurora Public Library Board of Directors for Monday, June 27, 2022 by Zoom. And in attendance are Sharon, Mary, Laurel, Ralph, Patsy, Moina, Alex, and Sherelle Harris. And we have a representative also from our minute taker, the Telesco Service. So as a special meeting, we are limited to the items on the agenda. And so the first item arises from a request that we've had from the registrar of voters to locate a new polling place for the 137B state legislative district polling place. Because their usual location at St. Mary's Church, their classroom annex is no longer available. And so they were looking for a public building suitable for holding this part of the election. Of course, it's very important because that's Patsy's voting district. So we have to make sure it works. So Sherelle and I met by phone with Stuart Wells, the Democratic Registrar of Voters. The Republican Registrar was out of town. And he went over the needs for parking, for handicap access, for the setup, you know, the day before and the take down of election night and the next night. And I don't speak for Sherelle, but it said to us, I think that it was very manageable. And from my point of view, certainly serves the purpose of the library to a T to be a a welcoming community center without regard to any political affiliation and to serve the cause of democracy. And as the board has jurisdiction over the use of the facility, we thought it appropriate to ask the board to weigh in on this. The reason why we're doing it tonight rather than at the regular meeting next month is that because the clinic had moved to an August primary, there's a need for nailing down these locations and for the registrars of voters to advertise where the voting will take place and to begin making those arrangements. So that's why we are putting as an action item tonight, a motion to approve the use. Sherelle, would you like to add anything from our conversations?
No, it seemed very doable. The only thing we have to figure out is they need to get into the building at 5:00 a.m. So we'd have to figure out like how they would pay a custodian or a guard.
Right. And Stuart said they had funds for that kind of overtime assistance.
I understand that. If it's going to our outsourced guard, then that would be easy. They can just cut a check. I just have to figure out if it's a city employee, how that will work.
Okay.
I think it's doable, but we just have to figure it out.
Okay.
As far as, you know, just keeping the north entrance open when we're not open to the public. I think everything that we discussed was doable.
So that would be the entrance that's on the courthouse side. And the elevator would be right there.
Right there.
The sidewalk from the parking lot. And we could work out arrangements, I think Stuart could work out arrangements with the parking authority to reserve the parking that day just for voters and perhaps library employees or something like that.
And we discussed the Eagles, you know, if we needed more parking to talk with the Eagles. But they've been phenomenal neighbors.
So are there any questions?
Yeah. Is this for the primary and the regular election?
Yes. The idea would be to try it out for the primary. And if things work out well, then to just continue with it. And these days, they don't have to move the big, heavy voting machines. These are really more like suitcase movable consoles for reading these electronically. So the moving of the voting apparatus in and out is much easier than it used to be with those big, heavy machines.
Did they discuss signage? I'm just concerned about the publicity for it that that it really has to be very strong because this district has got a lot of senior citizens and they they've always voted at St. Mary's. So I hope they plan a lot of signage and and are we going to have any notices within the library before the primary to let people know it's going to be there?
We can have something at the circulation desk. We also discussed having a sandwich board outside of both entrances so that people know and probably the way we sometimes would do the cafe, maybe have it on the corner of Mott and Beldon for people who are driving by. Internal signage definitely. I don't know if you had anything else in mind?
This is before the primary, you know, like a week or two before the before notice so that people know that this is gonna happen. Yeah.
Of course, of course. So internal and as well as having something at our circulation desk. And an E-blast.
And sometimes the registrars do limited mailings. And we discuss different signage, different language of signage. They're required to have have both English and Spanish. We discussed hopefully having Haitian Creole and maybe some other languages as well. But the registrars do have a budget for this kind of publicity of change of sites.
Well, I just, the last couple of elections, the signage on for the for the St. Mary's was very inadequate. From the, this is from the registrar's, the city's point of view, not ours, you know? I'm just hoping they're gonna do extra signage for people so they know where to go.
I think you're entirely right.
And you know, I just, when Patsy mentioned that, maybe we should have something at St. Mary's for people who don't know to direct them, you know, to the library.
Well, the registrar should be in charge of that, you know, but not us, but we need to be prepared for confusion and traffic confusion too.
Right. I think, you know, I won't say fortunately, but it's been the case that the August primaries have been relatively low turnout. And therefore, you know, it's probably a good way to get a dry run and see how it works.
Anyway, if you need a motion to approve, I'm happy to do that.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor. Patsy moves. Ralph seconds. So
Comment, please.
I'm sorry. Yes, okay. I'm going to have a motion on the floor first. Then we'll have comments. So I recognize Sharon first. I'm sorry, who may?
It was Moina.
I'm sorry. Let me see your Ferrari.
Yeah, no, that's okay. I so I I think it's a really good idea and I think it's good that it would be starting with August so we can have a dry run. There are a couple of questions I and just I did a quick Google search about libraries that are used as polling places and there are many around the country, including almost half the libraries in Brooklyn are used as polling places. So so is, do you think there's any like issue that we've only been talking with the Democratic Registrar of Voters as opposed to kind of like being in conversation with both of them? And then the other
So to be honest, I mentioned that the registrar, Republican Registrar was out of town when the three of us could meet, but Stuart assures me this is a joint request.
Okay. And then the other thing is where would, you know, one of the big things that we elect the the election places where I go to is that like there are a lot of people who like candidates and people, you know, drumming up support for their candidates. Where where would they be?
Well, there's a 75-foot requirement state law and they could be on the sidewalk somewhere on Beldon and somewhere on the parking lot side where people come in. There are going to be signs asking people not to come in the main doors off of Mott for voting. Now, we can't, you know, force somebody who walks in and says, where's the, where do I vote to go out? But we're going to make it pretty clear that that's not the voting entrance. And that the voting entrance is on the side near the courthouse and there will be places for the 75-foot rule to be enforced.
So that that really creates a, you know, for seniors to walk all the way around the building to get in to vote is is, you know, not an open invitation to come and vote. Why can't they come in both doors?
Well, where would they be parking, do you think, Patsy?
I don't know. That's the whole thing. It's confusing there. I mean, some would be in our parking lot and some district lot across, you know, across from the post office. That that would be easy to come in the side door. But if they're in in the parking lot or in the Elks or Moose or whatever it is, then they have to walk all the way around the building is
No, they don't. No, there's a direct line from our parking lot to the doors.
So in between the two buildings, there's gonna be a
But why can't they, why can't they just enter from either side?
Yeah, that's what my understanding, I thought they were just when we're close to the public that they would enter from the north entrance. But when we're open, they could go either way.
I think that needs to be worked out.
Yeah, to Patsy's point. And we had this, like, when we had the one entrance for COVID, if somebody goes to the front door, a senior citizen or someone, you know, who is you know, physically disabled, if they go there, are we going to say, no, you can't enter here? And go all, you know, make them go around. But you're right. It's something we need to work out.
Yeah.
I'm not opposed to having both entrances, but if there is a reason why we should just have the one, then I would understand.
Well, I think everything that we can do to encourage people to vote is what we should do. And not discourage anybody. So maybe we can look at, you can look at it again and deal with those logistics.
Ralph?
Yes. My concern, because I see so many seniors in the building, they'll become heavily dependent upon the elevator. And the only exit we have other than that from the second floor are stairs. What's thought given if the library is actually closed for a time period? Have we thought of using our first floor for easy access for all and not depending upon elevator? I'm thinking if we use, if we rely on that elevator, I'd make sure there were at least a few extra people in the building who might be able to help elderly come down those stairs. We have large staircases in the library and they're hard stone. But that is something that has to be considered. Only once when we were doing a book sale, the elevator gave out. And we had to escort people down the stairs and out of the building. Has any thought been given about utilizing the first floor for the voting?
We didn't discuss it. We were looking at a win-win, you know, we wouldn't have to disrupt you know, the activities on the first floor of people reading. You know, the different activities we just, we thought about, we didn't, no, we didn't discuss it. We just discussed the community room.
Was the reg, was the registrar comfortable with the with going upstairs? That seems to be just so cumbersome.
So the elevator is there?
Yeah, but some people will not go in elevators. They have a fear of elevators.
I just want to mention that if someone is, I understand what everyone's saying, but if someone is disabled enough, the head, the person running, the poles will come out to the car and allow them to vote that way. I mean, it happens. I don't know, maybe like five people each time. I think Alex, you probably know better, but I just want to let everyone know that.
And do we have a sense of numbers of how many people like come to St. Mary's? Just
I know it's pretty low. I don't think it's a huge, huge number.
Because that would be something easy to find out, right, from prior elections?
Past election. The registrar should be able to give you that very easily.
The August primaries have been very low turnout. You know, because people are away, the summers are very high rate of absentee voting, especially from the last two elections because of COVID. So, you know, I mean, these are things that we kind of have assumed Stuart and the other registrar will have discussed and take into account.
Yeah, but we're setting a, we're, I mean, I think the intention is that we become polling place moving forward, right? Is that isn't that correct? Or is it just for the August election?
No, it's kind of a dry run. And then it would be to have it for the November election as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. The concern that I have, you know, I see the people that go into St. Mary's and I see how confused they get because even the door to St. Mary's was not clearly marked last last election. But if it's a negative experience for voters, you know, are they going to understand it is not the fault of the library? Are we going to get negative spinoff from this? If it's not well done. So, you know, it's a great idea, but it really needs to be well done.
So maybe, I don't know, we want to approve it and then Alex and I can go back or I, whoever, you know, wants to do it, we can go back and work out the details.
Yeah. I think you do need to do more work on it. Yeah.
It seems like we might not know a lot of the issues until we actually see what happens, right?
Basically.
Well, I, I think you know, the issue if people have to go upstairs to vote, that's not normal. It doesn't happen very often. They go into the schools on the ground level. It's convenient. It's easy.
I just want to mention one more thing. I'm pretty sure during the primary, we're voting on whether or not we can do early, early voting, correct? Like in the mail. Correct, Alex? So I'm assuming there's going to be a big chunk of people.
Yeah.
No, that, the, the early voting is a, yes, a referendum that's on the ballot in November.
Oh, in November, not in, on the primary?
Correct.
Oh, okay. Thanks for clarifying.
Yeah, we invited Stuart to be on tonight.
You know, I think Stuart, I'm not sure that he prefers Zoom as much as, hold on one second. Let me just see if I can get up. He might want to do a polling.
Is there a way for us just to vote on August and then and then reassess?
Well, you know, I'd rather vote on both. And then if they think it didn't work out, they could come to us and say they don't want to be here anymore. But, you know, once you start spending money advertising, it'd be even more confusing for people to say, okay, you voted at the St. Mary's last year at the library in August and now in November you vote somewhere else.
I would Now, why not commit and then work out the kinks as they arise?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
You know?
What are we waiting for?
Well, I think Sherelle was going to try to see if
Okay, Stuart is on. Stuart, can you hear everyone?
Hi, I can hear you. I haven't heard anyone else, but yeah.
Can you hear Stuart?
Yes.
Okay.
So Stuart, hi, this is Alex. There were some questions raised by board members about a couple of issues. One is about, you know, how many people are expected to vote at both elections coming up? And second, a lot of issues about whether the elevator is adequate and will stairs deter senior citizens and others from voting? And what we've said is that we discussed all these issues with you and you know, the library area and, you know, what is your judgment about these concerns?
Well, we think it'll work. The Jefferson School was two flights of stairs, which was going to be a much bigger problem to go up. And so we think the elevator will be enough. This is one of the smaller of our of our polling places. And I guess our view is that we can try it in the primary, whether of course less voters than in the general election, both because the turnout percentage is lower and then it's only the major party people. And we can see how it goes and then address the concerns that are raised there. And if we think it's going to be a problem for the general election, we'll have time to look for some alternative there if necessary. I don't have the exact number of expected voters. Few thousand at most, but probably less than that, probably around a thousand in a primary.
Stuart, the concern was also expressed by someone about you know, signage over at St. Mary's to make sure that people don't go to the wrong place and whether there's some communication that can be done prior to the date of the primary to warn people that there has been a location change. Do you have plans?
A lot of location changes or at least district changes because of the redistricting. And we are going to be sending out a postcard to everybody and including obviously St. Mary's former voters. And we have signage already at the Fritters being printed to direct them to the library from there. And we've talked to them, to those folks and they're happy with us putting up signs in their parking lot for the obvious reason that's in it with a boy people knocking on their door to try to see where the voting was. And I know they've been touchy about signs in the past, which is all right. But we've already secured their, I think, happy permission for that for, you know, this first time around.
Stuart, can, can, how many precincts are going to have new locations?
I'm sorry?
You said there are several locations that are going to be changed for precincts. So how many?
No, we're largely using the same, although in the municipal, we don't use Wolf Pit. And now we do. And in the past, we were the, on the west side, they were voting at Rotten, but the district has been changed. So it'll be Rowayton for the southern part of Rowayton that still votes there and Brookside for the, for the rest of them, pretty much the same group as votes at Brookside in the municipal election. Actually, a lot more people will be voting at their normal location than in the past. We were able to draw lines that were more and still keep precincts the correct sizes. We were able to draw lines along major streets like Turnpike and Westport Avenue to and Newtown. So that the division lines were pretty easy to understand.
Now, I think what Stuart meant by the comment was not that the voting places have changed, but that different neighborhoods are changed because of the redrawing of the districts, but the voting locations remain pretty much the same.
And they're more similar than they used to be, actually. They changed sort of favorably to Norwalkers not having to go to too many different places. But of course, those lines were largely changed by the legislature. So nothing we could do about that.
Any other questions for Stuart?
It's not for Stuart, but it's just a general comment. Going back on Patsy's idea about signage, it's a very small item, but I think we should entertain it. And that is in the elevator, we have both a two and a two R. And I think we've got to have a small sign that says we're voting pointing to the two. If not, we're going to wind up people going the wrong way because we do have two, number twos.
We can do, that sounds like an idea to specify the exact floor and, you know, that they're looking to get off of. Say, excellent idea.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Stuart? Okay.
Well, and if any of you have suggestions, you know, feel free to let me know if they come to mind after the meeting for things that would make it go more smoothly. We'd be certainly interested in pursuing any good ideas like that.
Stuart, this is Alex. When you, Sherelle and I had our discussion, you indicated that the Republican Registrar was out of town. Can you affirm that this request for the library is coming from both of you?
We talked about it extensively before he, he went out of town. They'd gone in when we investigated at Jefferson. They'd gone in thinking that would be the best choice, but the the two flights of stairs is a real, is a real killer on that. And so he became very, much more interested in the library.
Okay, thank you.
Stuart, there's one thing I think you really got to think of traffic control and you might have to have a policeman there because it's very tight traffic.
We have policemen at each of the polling places already for security and parking.
Yeah, well, yeah, what I'm talking, not, not on the parking lot, I'm talking out, you know, on West Avenue and Beldon intersection.
No, we have a, we always have a police officer at each of our polling places. And we also are going to have, of course, signage, voter parking and similar things. We're very good on signage.
Any other questions for Stuart or any further discussion? There's a motion on the floor. If there's no further discussion, then I'd call for a vote. All those in favor of approving the request from the registrars of voters to relocate the 137B state precinct to the library for the August primary and the November general election. Please say aye or raise your hand. Any opposition? Any abstention? And I think it's approved unanimously. Thank you, Stuart, for coming on.
Thank you, Alex. Thank you, members of the board. Appreciate your input. And again, keep following up on any suggestions. Obviously, this is something that's going to be a work in progress. We're going to do everything we can to make it work out. Very aware of at least most of the problems. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stuart. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll ring off that.
All right. Have a good night. Bye bye.
All right, the, the next item on the agenda is to start our discussion of the so-called efficiency study. And I thought tonight the principal focus would be on the response that Sherelle drafted and has been circulated. There are a number of issues in the efficiency study that relate to issues between the board and the Community Services Division or the board of the city that I thought we could take up at the next meeting and focus tonight mainly on anything we wanted to inquire further in terms of Sherelle's recommendations. Sherelle, do you want to say anything in general about the report we prepared before we ask you some questions about it?
Not really. Just, you know, for background information that the Community Services Department, you know, was newly created in 2019 by bringing together three established departments, which included the health, the by bringing together three established departments, which included the Health, the Library, and the Human Relations and Fair Rent Department and creating the um, the new Human Services Department. So um you know, just trying to merge those departments that were independent under one um you know, under one department, you know, a little bit challenging, but I think Lamond is doing a great job. And um, so my response basically concentrated on the internal efficiency um communication, um the change in supervisors' titles and the change in some job descriptions.
So I thought tonight what we could do is uh, just take turns asking questions. We'll give everybody a a chance to ask a question, go around the board and then come back and do a second and as many rounds as we need. So uh, I'm just kind of curious, as a self-interested matter of the board, Sherrell, on page four, have your report at the bottom. You indicated that uh, there'd be a change of positions regarding who would be handling library board meeting postings, reminder calls and so on. Uh, who in the future, if these changes are implemented, will be responsible for sort of administration of things related to the meetings?
So what I indicated was that I removed those um, our accounting person was actually doing those um serving in that capacity. Sorry, you know, we moved those so she could basically concentrate on accounting. Um, I would like to have a secretary, whether it's full-time or part-time, and that person would handle those duties.
And that would be a new hire?
Correct.
And what will happen until that or you know, uh, until that?
I've been doing it. So for for me coming in as a, as a new director, it was great for me to learn the processes and particularly if we do get a secretary, if that person is out, um, you know, someone else could do it. But I, for me, I needed to learn all of the different roles and duties and things like that.
Okay.
But I didn't think it belonged in the accounting department.
Right. Well, that was my first question. Do somebody else like to uh discuss an issue or pose a question?
Sure, I've got one. Um, and Sherrell, I think it's just a matter of semantics. So on page two, um, right above finding Evergreen Solutions in that paragraph, um, at the end, it says ultimately what works best for Norwalk Public Library is what is presented. I'm um, and I'm not sure what you mean by that. You mean presented in the report that you're giving us? Or do you mean presented by Evergreen or presented by?
Presented in the in the report. So
In this report. Okay. All right.
I talked to different library directors across the country. Um, some, you know, the same size, some obviously a little bit bigger, some smaller. So um, so the thought is like, you know, wonderful ideas. Um, you know, lots of back and forth conversations. But you know, each library is unique. So yeah, so that's what I'm asking.
Okay, all right.
I can reword that, Ms. Wordsmith.
Well, you know, it doesn't, it, I just wanted clarification for myself.
Yeah.
And then my, my second question while I'm here, if I can just ask this, um, I know that you have the intention of changing a lot of the titles on the library organizational chart. We talked a little bit about this in the last meeting. And I, you know, coming out of the community college and the way in which this, this horrible reorganization is changing the way in which it works and is sort of corporatizing education. I have very strong reactions against turning anything that's a public service into something that sounds like business. And so I'm just wondering if maybe you can talk a little bit about some of these changes. Why is manager better than librarian? And you know that it may just be my personal prejudice. So that's why I want to hear what you have to say.
Right. So one is a lot, lot of libraries our size do have managers. It also came up that um a director, like if it's a director, shouldn't be reporting to a director. So those were some, that was some concerns. For me, it was nothing to do with with corporate. If anything, it was making, having more clarity in um, in roles and positions. And even some departmental titles as well.
Okay, so like reporting lines, that kind of thing? Okay. All right. Thank you.
But on that, would that also, uh, Sherrell um, be be necessary to be in alignment with the the city's titles and pay scales?
It would have to be. That was one of the recommendations. And I I honestly think it already is. Um, you know, there's great, different grade levels. Um, so I think the we're already in alignment. I just think we need to do some things with the titles, um, you know, part of the the efficiency studies report.
Um, I have a question. So in um, in Evergreen's report, it said that the library has 21 full-time employees. So in this org chart, I haven't counted them, but how many employees would this org chart represent? A full-time employees would this represent?
So full-time. So I think roughly we do, you know, have roughly about 20. Um, so if we look here, we've obviously the managers. Um, and then so roughly, yeah, I think they're they're correct with the amount that we have.
Because but but don't we want to staff up?
All time and part-time. I'm sorry?
Yeah, because I was thinking that we wanted to staff up a little bit, right? Like, we need more. Um, so so I was just trying to get a sense of how many more.
In a filling two, um, three positions. Um, but that's something that I do want to discuss at our next meeting. I think so it will, you know, I'll just, I'll jump ahead. So I'm thinking, so I have the technology department or the currently called the Technical Services Department, looking to see if we can possibly outsource. So beginning July, we will be outsourcing our DVDs, which will be a huge work, you know, uh, relief in workload for that particular department. Um, so that the, and what that means is the items will come in already processed. And so um, we're also looking to see what that will look like for books as well. First, you know, I I also, you know, interview across the country and actually um, I first started in Connecticut. And some departments are all, I mean, some libraries are already outsourcing. They may have one full-timer and one part-timer that's doing like the original cataloging, you know, and like catching mistakes and things like that. So I'm waiting um, for that to come back to look at the cost effectiveness and um, you know, the relief in workload.
Well, just on that point, I'm sorry to interrupt you, uh, just on that particular point. What does outsourcing the DVDs mean? I didn't quite.
So that means that they will come in already processed. We won't necessarily have to process them in-house.
But then the uh, somebody wants to take out a DVD, that happens in-house.
It does, but this, this is the two different departments. So right now, when they want to check them out, that's at the circulation desk. I'm talking about the processing. So from the time, you know, a DVD is ordered, then it, when it comes in, the cataloging and then the processing, so we can make it, um, we put the, you know, the barcodes and and those types of things, the spine labels, that will be done for us.
So it's really a partial outsourcing of the preparation for making them available to patrons?
Correct.
Okay. So I'm sorry, uh, other, other questions? People haven't asked a question yet? More than I interrupted you if you wanted to continue. I'm sorry.
No, no, that was my, you know, though I was just trying to get a sense of what, like, what is now versus what is like the, you know, your best case scenario here in in terms of part, part, full-time and part-time employees.
With that.
Hi.
Uh, so could you just, so uh, I'm going to get to the specific positions in a minute, but so, you know, we said we wanted to get a secretary. We talked about a marketing person. We talked about a economic development, workforce development person. How many new positions are you recommending uh in your report?
So right now, so the aspiring would be the um, the branding and marketing. Um, that's something that we can look at with the schools. Um, or look at, you know, if the city is not ready to fund it, you know, we're trying to fund it through a grant. Um, the secretary um, full-time would be preferable, but I'm willing, you know, to go with part-time for now. Um, and then the other is the access services position, which I think I sent to you that maybe like six months ago. We discussed it at one of the board meetings.
And is hiring an assistant director part of the recommendation?
I have not done that as yet. Right now, I would just love to fill some of the positions so we can actually function properly. Um, perhaps um, as Lamond and I discussed, um, just next fiscal year or fiscal year thereafter.
Okay, well, let me defer to others, and I have questions about two of these uh, positions. Sharon?
Yep, I'm actually, you, Alex, you might be interested in asking these questions. I'm not sure. Um, so the recommendation on page, it says city 143 is what um, the consultants are recommending for the org chart. And then if I look at your org chart, they're like super different with the assistant director levels. And it looks like you've just completely taken them out.
I did. I did. And we met with the supervisors as well, you know, to discuss it. Um, but yes, it was.
So you, okay, because I mean, you know your library best, but they're recommending it. Um, and as far as like, what's up?
We didn't agree.
You guys didn't agree. Okay. That's okay. You can, you can agree to disagree. Um, the other question I had about the Assistant Director of Library Operations, without having an Assistant Director, are we concerned at all for the need for continuity? Should you step away? Should you need to take time off? Um, it seems really important.
Yeah, those are things to think about too, but we also need staff right now because every, you know, we're all burned out. And I'll just say, I haven't had a vacation in two years, you know, with, you know, any good leader is going to make sure and allow their team to have one. But, you know, I have, and we need staff. So I, you know, what another recommendation will be, I do think um, the adult services um it's really been tough filling the part-time positions because of the candidates that we're getting. Um, but you know, if we can't fill it with part-time, I, we may need a full-time because of, I mean, just looking at their workload and all the things that they do. Um, and if we're considering opening another evening and we're considering opening on Sundays, um, adult services is one that I'm really looking at right now.
Okay, I understand. Um, I know you've been working your, your tail off and it would be great to have that so you can step away. But um, so
Right now, it's we have, we, you know, a lot of us, we're just filling in where we can.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I I get it. Um, for the, and this is, this is related to that. The recommendation about the Assistant Director for Library Operations, I think they had recommended that the Adult Services Manager step in, right? Or or Cindy, correct?
What could happen? Um, and what, so just in the past, um, we had it where the supervisors were rotating, being in charge. So um, basically trying to make things easier, you know, for people. Um, and when I came in, it was this way too. Not when I came to here, but when I started like many years ago. Um, God bless you. They um, you know, the director was pretty much in charge. So what could happen is if I do go on vacation, the rotation can happen again as it had in the past, or somebody could be designated. Um, in the past, you know, uh, with my predecessor, people were not compensated. That was just part of what was happening. Um, you know, if we decide that we want to have to be compensated, you know, that's fine. Um, but in the past, they were not compensated.
Okay.
And so just say like on a Monday, to say Vicki might be in charge on Tuesday, um, Cindy might be in charge on Wednesday. Um, Lori might be in charge. And then we'll fill the other positions, so on and so forth.
And that's what you're doing now?
We're not. We did that before, just to make it easier because we lost staff and, you know, people just for consistency. Um, you know, if I step away, like I have called Vicki, I have called Cindy to see if they would be in charge, like if, you know, if I had a meeting or I had to step away or something like that, but we've not done the the rotation.
And what can we do as a board to help support you uh with getting more people and getting them quickly for you? What can we do?
I think, I think for the most part, Lamond is understanding. Um, if, you know, I think in the efficiency study too, I think they also said that um, personnel and IT also needed more staff. Uh, but I think, I think their understanding of 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 what we needed, we just needed to get through this. So, you know, Lamond and I will be meeting. He said he wanted to be here tonight, but he um, could not for health reasons.
Okay. Thank you, Sherrell. And I just, I just want you to have the support that you need.
Always. I know, I I feel that and thank you. Thank you.
Just to follow up, when Sherrell and I met with the mayor and Lamond and Lisa King, you know, one of the items that came up is that the efficiency study isn't necessarily a budget reduction study. And that some of the things that you need to be more efficient may cost more money or may necessitate hiring additional personnel. Uh, Sherrell talked about, you know, what happened when the director was gone previously. Well, previous to that, there wasn't Assistant Director. And at some point, the city came to the prior executive director said, what do you want? So no branch and short and assistant director, you can't have both anymore. Well, maybe one of the things this efficiency study points out is that to be efficient, this rotating of supervision among managers or whatever we're going to be end up calling them, isn't the most efficient thing to have. And if the library needs an assistant director as well as a branch manager, then that's what the recommendation is to help recognize the efficiencies and personnel, you know, humanitarianism from this report. And that's what we ought to be requesting. The library has fewer positions now than it used to have. It shifted a lot toward part-time positions as a way to save money, to have people without having to pay benefits. And I I think, uh, you know, it's time that we stop accepting these cutbacks uh of really important positions. Just to add the point from that discussion with Sharon, with Sharon.
Um, yes, Alex, I I s- I do agree that um, it would be ultimately the goal to have a branch manager as well as an assistant director. But at the present moment, I think that we're struggling so much, we must have that branch manager in SoNo. Um, it is very much needed. So you know, um, I I think for future, yes, we can request both positions, but working with what we got, I think we need to stick with the plan of a branch manager.
Yeah, Mary. That position was um, that and the access services manager both were approved. So um, so so definitely we will, we will have um, that position.
Yeah, Mary, we've agreed with that. We voted in favor of it. I'm just saying that as a response to the efficiency study, it was made clear to us when we met with the mayor that one of the results of putting these issues out is that there may be efficiencies that can only be accomplished with more personnel or more spending on program or or something like that. And we shouldn't look upon this solely as a way to be efficient uh of reducing funding if the efficiencies require additional personnel to achieve. But I agree with you, Mary, that, and that's underway now. So it's not an either or choice.
Yeah, and I think we have to remember we're coming out of COVID too, where they're like the workforce was, you know, there was also COVID on top of a lot of things that have made it uh, the
Restful.
Employees contract a little bit more than they would have in a normal situation. So um, so there's no doubt, we need to build back and build back better, I guess. Um, so.
Yeah, like I said, I'm really right now looking, I think, you know, once I get the report of Yeah, like I said, I'm really right now looking, I think, you know, once I get the report of the outsourcing, I'll be in a better position to discuss that, which I have not gotten that yet. But I'm really right now looking at adult services, particularly like and so they have to make some decisions too. You know, Lamond did mention that, you know, people's jobs require them to be here and they can't. We need to really think about that. Because we can't just keep hiring, hiring, hiring. So we want to, you know, make sure that, that everybody who is hired, if they're hired to work the the physical desk, that they need to be here to work the physical desk. But, you know, there's things like passports, you know, that we need, you know, to add, and looking at evenings. Possibly Sundays. So, so right now, I'm looking at everything. But I think the branch and and adult services need a lot of attention.
I have a question. Can we get a breakdown between people that are assigned to each location? And where, where we, where the vacancies are?
So actually, I do have, so what I have is, is the positions that we, that we've lost.
Looking at this chart in order to interpret it and other people looking at it, it would be, I would like to know, you know, where all these people are, which, which location?
So with the, I just put technology and processing because I think that's a better title for that position, but with technical services. Every, they are, that's where they are. So if you look at the technical services and there's a manager. And then there's two part-time assistants for techno. Well, right now, there's one, we're more than likely going to hire another one because we the city is closed on the weekends and they're, you know, they're closed at five. So we need somebody that can handle our evenings as well as the weekend. So we will probably add another technology assistant. So we have.
I don't know if you can color code it or something, but so, you know, you know where everybody is. I'm trying to interpret where these people work most of the time. Do they float or are they stationary?
They're pretty stationary because.
Yeah, so, but can you provide us that information somehow? So that we can see where the holes are better, you know, and, and help you to get, get them filled. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, and to add that, I don't know if you mean like, are they in Sono or are they in the main library?
Right, or do, yeah, some, some positions float? Do they go, you know, yeah.
Not right now. So I would say the only one, you know, we did have a debate about, you know, moving people around. Some in favor of, you know, people get used to, you know, certain places. So we thought, you know, I thought maybe we could start maybe a day or two, you know, we're having, once we're up to staff, having part-time staff move around. But, so the person who probably should move around the most would be the technology person. You know, so we have a lot of talk about, you know, we should be one system. And so that person should be coming both to Sono and to the main library. For instance, oh, well, I was going to mention this at the next board meeting, but the wifi has been upgraded and thank you to Rodney Garcia and City IT and his partner. So it's a much stronger system signal. We won't have dead zone. So they did that at at the main library. So, you know, the IT person for the library as well as the IT person for the city should both then be coming over to Sono as well to make sure that Sono is taken care of too. So, so that person, you know, being, you know, the manager for this system would be the person that's kind of floating between the building to make sure both buildings have, you know, adequate signals.
I just asked the person from Tlesko to note that Janie Williams during the meeting. And Janie, thank you again for your flexibility about holding the meeting tonight.
So, you know, I'm not sure if you got what I'm asking. Okay, yeah, yeah. So, you know, when you see two full-time library clerks, I would assume one is in Belden and one is in South.
They're all, so the branch is at the branch. All the other positions are at the main library. So the technology and processing, that's done at the main library. There's an adult services manager at the main library. As you at the main library access will be at the main library. And the branch, the staff that's there, that's listed is at the branch. So all of these positions are indicated. I could put name if you'd like.
It's not names, it's positions and where they are.
Yeah, so, okay, but yeah, I hear what you're saying, Patsy, for sure.
I have a question, but I've asked one. Does anybody else like to ask a a question? So on, on page nine, where these kind of aspirational positions are. Going to the second one first, the branding and marketing coordinator. I think this is a terrific idea. And I hope that we don't delay it until fiscal year 24. Because it seems to me one of the goals of an efficiency study, particularly for a service facility like the library, is to get more people to use our services to get the word about our services out among a broader audience. And I think what tends to happen now, this is just my, you know, curbside observation, is that, you know, people in the, let's say, children's department or adult services end up doing a lot of their own promotional work. So important to have that done. And I think it's really a great idea to have a person dedicated to doing that for all the programs, for all the departments. And I don't want to, again, my preference is not to wait to fiscal year 24 to do that. Again, maybe this means we, in next year's operating budget, ask for this position as well as some other ones. But I think especially with social media. You know, it's both so feasible for somebody who is dedicated to this to have an enormous impact. I think the great strength of our library, particularly under your leadership, Sherelle, is our terrific programming.
That to Cindy too, and Vicky, oh my gosh.
Very in general, programming is terrific. You know, when you send out, or whoever sends out those long, multi-color calendars about what's going on. It's fabulous. It's so impressive. But I'm not sure that it gets out enough just being on our website. And that's what, I think, that's why I think that this person, this position of branding and marketing coordinator could really expand the impact of the library manifold. And to me, that's really being efficient. So I really support that. And again, I hope you can find a way to that we can find a way together to accelerate the city supporting this position.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Going to say with this, I agree because I think it would give the librarian some time back. They wouldn't have to do the writing and the marketing so they could really concentrate on other things. And that's part of the efficiency too. You know, whether we need more staff or not, I think people are just, they're being too broad and spread around too much. Also, it's the consistency because there's not one particular feel or look. I know when Stan was here. You know, there was a certain way that he wanted, that things looked or whatever. And then it, you know, once he did that, I guess it went on to the the staff to take care of it. But there's no particular there's not one cohesive deal, if I may. And also I think we're sending out too many of the newsletters or e-blasts. I don't like to use that term. But I think we could do, maybe have, if, if everybody just, you know, if everybody, you know, made a list of all of their programs in advance. We may not be able to do everything, but I think I would like to have it be one system that goes out and have it under the community services umbrella. The Sono staff has piloted that, putting community service and then library. And Lamond was very pleased he noticed it and was very pleased. And since we're under community services, I would really love to do that system-wide. But I would just like to have someone, I've actually been corresponding with someone who just left Wisconsin and went to a prominent library in Ohio. He has a position similar to that, where he's doing, you know, the social media. He's doing like the branding and different things. So I've, you know, kind of been, he just started a job, so I've just been asking him like lots of questions. But I would love to have that. I think it's just pertinent to have. Every other library that I know, particularly in other states, have that position.
Yeah, I agree. And I say, I think that's what efficiency is all about. So I'm, you know, really supportive. It's a great idea. You know, community services, better or not, doesn't interest me so much, but promoting the library programs really does. And things like the, the survey we're doing. There's no reason why that should have fallen on your shoulders. So, you know, this person could do that kind of thing more often, more targeted, you know. Anyway, I think it's a great idea, and let's try to accelerate the creation of that position.
I think that person working in tandem with the access services, they could really do it more. You know, maybe less organically, more strategically. And as you say, target marketing, I think. I mean, I, I see the vision and, you know, we could be remarkable if we got some of these positions still.
Yeah, that'd be great. Again, our strength is our programming. I have a different feeling about the other position that you've mentioned about business librarian and career and workforce librarian. I think it's good, obviously, one of the growth areas for the library throughout the country has been relationships with the business community as more employees are not going back full-time to their offices but are looking to work remotely. And the library is a natural place for them to come. We've increased our internet capacity to help deal with that. We're creating smaller workrooms for people to utilize. You know, we're doing all these things that hopefully will serve the business community. I'm not sure that I quite agree with you, Sherelle, that that a librarian should be dedicated to workforce development as we've come to know that term. As opposed to serving the library needs of the business community. Is a, is a function. Now, whether that needs to be, you know, in terms of all the positions we've talked about tonight. Obviously, we're going to have to prioritize some of them, you know, going forward. Again, I feel marketing and branding is a, it's a key thing. And, you know, your, your judgment about what we need internally in terms of secretary and other stuff. But, you know, workforce development is a different set of skills than a traditional library position. Again, I believe in the library serving the business community. And we've geared a lot of stuff, our facilities, our infrastructure to doing that. And I think that's a growth area for us. But I'm not sure that I quite agree with how you stated it. Maybe there's a way for you to take a second look at that. Is have a librarian dedicated to workforce development. I'm not sure how that would work. As opposed to the library being supportive of workforce development in the business community or from the, I mean, you know, the city has a economic development department, obviously. And, I mean, I think to me, that's their function, not ours, but we should be supportive. So I think that's something that I couldn't quite understand why that should be at least a priority for us.
So, and we can agree to disagree certainly. So one of Lamond's of community services, you know, they're looking at workforce and adding workforce. Once we lost Neon, me being in the community. And basically all over. So I'm with people of different socioeconomic needs at all times. So I see the need for that, and I'm glad that the city in Lamond also saw the need too. With us being under the umbrella of the community services department. You know, people probably will be coming to the library, you know, to fill out applications. And it would be nice to have someone who is knowledgeable, you know. Not necessarily, you know, there's no concentration in library school for workforce, but for what we're doing in Norwalk. It would be great to have a part-time librarian, whether it's somebody new or whether it's somebody who's on staff that's trained to do that work. At Sono, even as a children's librarian who was out in the community. You know, you notice there's people who are incarcerated, who can't get jobs. So I did, I was children's, but I did ask one of the librarians to put together a list using our wonderful databases. You know, and just calling around to see, you know, who hires ex-felons. You know, and I agree wholeheartedly about the businesses, but we serve Norwalk is so socio-economically diverse. I do not want to forget about our working class or our non-working class. And I also want to be supportive of my supervisor's goals as well. So whether it's part-time, I do think we need to have somebody dedicated for when the people are coming in. You know, with help. And I know we do this all the time. We're helping with job applications, but workforce is a little bit it's a different animal. And I really want the library not to, as some people think. You know, have our noses in the air, but have our noses in the air and on the ground too. So that means we're helping everybody and we're looking at all the different pockets of Norwalk. So that's why I put that in there and thinking, particularly, you know, trying to align some of the things that Lamond, what, what the library is doing with what Lamond's vision and what he's doing as well.
Sherelle, also, just to add to what you were saying, because I totally agree with you. Do we not already have a partnership with the American Work Job Center on, in the data, I've seen it in the databases.
Yeah, so I have to say Tina, Valentina Klemer is doing a great job. Like she has the job coach come. And so, you know, she, I know she and Lamond have been corresponding as well. He's very impressed with that, but you know, he's serious. He really wants to get the workforce development underway.
Yeah, I think that would complement that and make that broader, because we already have it in our database that our, our clients can go to. So I don't know why that would be.
They can. And also, like Tina would have the bus, you know, come down. I know, you know, someone did ask me, why is it just at Maine that it should be at Sono as well because of, you know, some of the you know, the housing and different things that are here too. But, you know, I do want to give Tina a shout out, Valentina. You know, for her work with that. And, you know, we want to expand it.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not saying we shouldn't, should ignore it. And we do do things now. We have the workforce come and work with the Connecticut Department of Labor. But the report it stated as for fiscal year 24, we want to create a full-time position.
And I don't think it says full-time. It says it would be ideal for existing full or part-time staff. So it could be existing, but it's just, it's a concentration.
Okay, well, yeah, I'm just, this is a matter of priorities. If Lamond, you know, feels this is an important way to support connection between the library and community services, he should be willing to fund it. I just didn't want it to come out of one of the positions that we're trying to create to.
I don't think so. I don't, I don't think he's, he's thinking like that. That's not the impression that I get, that, that he's thinking about that. This is honestly just a way to think of doing things, you know, a little bit differently. It was the same thing when I was a children's librarian. We lost the branch manager. Nobody came down to Sono. So guess who went upstairs and decided to learn how to do adult services so that the community would not lose out. So it's just a different way. It was, you know, a different skill set that I gained. Same library, but just a different skill set. So it's not necessarily anything like we're going to create something new unless he thinks that's what it is. But again, it states that it would be ideal for existing full or part-time, or maybe, you know, if we hire a part-timer, maybe that can be their concentration. But honestly, you know, the city is embarking on the D E I, diversity, equity, and inclusion. And for me, that's part of workforce. I don't want to just, I, my, when I came into the system, I was never about one group or another. I was all over the place. I could go to the housing projects. I could go to Stepping Stone's Museum and not lose a step because that was Norwalk. It had so many different types of people, racially, culturally, socio-economically. And I don't want to lose sight of that. And I don't want to make, looking at workforce, I don't want to make it patronizing. And especially if the city is going to go down this lane, we want to go down in a real way.
Yeah, I share those aspirations. I'm just reacting to what I read in that report.
So I have a question that's a little bit less focused on the actual positions, but more about communication. So you, so do you do, do, deal directly with HR? Or do you deal direct, do you deal with Lamont who deals with HR? Like, what is your relationship in terms?
He and I work together, but I go through him, you know, as my boss. You know, I don't circumvent him. I go directly to him, you know, if I, if I have an idea. And then we work on it together. He lets, you know, whether he agrees or disagrees, supports or doesn't support. And then, you know, for the most part, I would, if it's, if it's a new job, I would write the description. He would take a look at it and present it. So we, we work in tandem.
With HR? Okay. Because I, I didn't know if you, it was like, you know, if you were just looking to hire a position that's well-established, if you just go straight to, if you just.
No, he's my boss and I go to my boss when I want, when I want to know something. I don't go directly to personnel or any place without speaking to him. And for me, that's just respectful.
Okay, I, and so this report, I think we talked about it a little bit last time. It, like, where's it going? Like, who, who are you giving it to? Or how, how is it being submitted or?
So it's being submitted to you. Lamont and I met with, with the staff. And then, so I put together some, some goals that we, you know, that I think we can achieve, like a timeline. You know, zero to three months, three to six months, six to nine months. And that's, you know.
Okay, I just wanted to know if that, it's like a report for the board and that's kind of where.
For the board, for Lamont, for the city.
Okay, so you, so you, you are submitting it to the city as well. I'm just.
Yeah, when simultaneously.
Simultaneously, okay.
And, you know, and the supervisors, we met, we met about it.
Okay.
Question? Okay, so one of the things that popped out on the, to me on the Evergreen study, there's a line about the need for more collaboration between the two libraries. And I know we talk about that a lot, but can you address what you think that means? And then how you plan on the sort of handling that?
So I think it is addressed in here. Basically, so we did have a discussion about moving staff around. You know, one train of thought was, you know, people get used to, you know, coming in, you know, they go to one place, they, they used to think Alex. You know, they go to another place, they used to think Patty. So we had that discussion. And then, you know, with specialty positions, we obviously can't do that. There's no moving around, you know, targeted, specific things. So what I'm thinking is with some of the part-timers, you know, just maybe having them rotate so that they can see the different buildings. But I think that's something that between staff and supervisors, that needs to be fleshed out. So, you know, not necessarily that you want, that everybody's going to be comfortable, but just something, if we, if we can, it would be great if everyone can be comfortable. But I think starting with the part-timers would be the best bet. And, you know, sometimes I do hear that. I hear people say it, but I don't necessarily hear people do it. I, I, I think it's, it's, you know. So let me not say that. So, so what I would like to do is, is try to start with maybe some of the, the part-time staff.
I, I think this is a really good point and something that, you know, it comes up time and time again at the board level. You know, it's come about as long as I've been on the board. And now it came up in the Evergreen report and in your report. And I think, you know, as we move forward and kind of revising our strategic plan and things like that, I think this needs to be like a high priority goal, but not just a goal. It has, it should really, there should be a lot of like, it should be really fleshed out in terms of what are some action steps? You named one of them. What are, you know, action steps that really can make that happen? You know, because I think, like, it's, it's, we're just going to keep talking about it for a long time unless like there's a real, like, solid plan behind how to, how to make that happen. So that's just, that's just a thought about moving forward, so.
No, I appreciate that.
Thanks.
Other questions or comments?
What are our next steps?
Well, I think, I think, I'm sorry, does somebody else want to speak?
Oh, it's okay. Go ahead.
You know, we recall that after the report came, efficiency report came out, I submitted a work plan to the board. And then we met, Sherella and I met with Mayor Lamont and Alicia. And it was agreed that we would hold off.
Was that the meeting that I was at, Alex, or did you have another one?
Forgive me. I'm sorry, Patsy, you were there.
Oh, okay. I just didn't know if you had another meeting.
I apologize. And we agree that the pattern in the city was to ask each department had to reply to the recommendations in their report first before this board or other boards or agencies made comments. So having received Sherelle's report and discussed it, I think the next step is for us to discuss the recommendations and findings of the Evergreen report. And anything about Sherelle's report that we care to comment on in terms of the board. And I think the July meeting is the next opportunity to do that. I would hope that, you know, if people have responses to what the Evergreen study either found or recommended, it might be helpful to try to get some of those in writing prior to the July meeting. So we have something concrete to look at. But I think that's the, I mean, the next step is for the, is for the board to make its views known. And again, all of these are recommendations that in the end, the common council and the mayor's office have to act on. If they involve position changes, changes in the budget, creation of new positions, some of the issues about the inconsistencies between the state statute on libraries and the city code, questions that Patsy raises often. That we simply make our, our views known as a board and whether we agree or disagree, as recommendations. And, you know, we hope that the city takes the opportunity in the efficiency study seriously. It seems to me the Board of Education is really doing that. And we should, I think, have the same attitude.
The Board of Education is definitely doing it, but we're respecting our director and our expertise, you know, supporting her. So, yeah, we're not usurping that role. So I just want to make that clear that, you know, we're listening, we're watching. But we're supporting and respecting her position.
I, I have, you know, I always approach the decision-making and how you're going to be able to get something changed and accomplished. It usually entails money. And so I, I think we, if we could get a comparison over the last couple of years, two or three years to, to actual budgets against expenditures with, you know, the part-time help and positions that haven't been filled. So that we have the ammunition and the knowledge to articulate the effects that any of the, any of our recommendations will, will have on the next budget. Because, yeah, it comes down to that. So I don't, I don't know how we can, how we can get that information the easiest way. Through the finance director, we have to, I don't know, Alex, do you?
Well, I think we ask Sherelle to get the information from the finance director and, and Lamont.
Yeah. And that it's a request for the board for that information.
I had, so I can have them, you know, go through this. I looked at some of the things that, how much, you know, we lost, when we lost some of the positions. So, yeah, I think that's a good idea, Patty.
Yeah, I see. Because we then, then would know, you know, what was allocated in the, in the budget. And then when people left and the positions weren't refilled or they were filled with three part-timers, I'm just throwing this out as an instance versus, you know, time-wise of, of a nine to five and one and a half position, whatever it is. If we could just get educated to what it is so that we know what we're talking about.
Got it.
So Sherelle, can we make that a formal request? Thank you.
And have it come from the board, not from Sherelle. I mean, the board has requested this information.
Maybe go back five years?
That would be fabulous because, you know, the COVID just miscues everything. So normally I always do five years.
Sounds good.
Okay.
And Alex, are you suggesting that we send comments in writing ahead of the next meeting? Did I understand that correctly or not?
No, I think, Laurel, that would be helpful from this point of view. That, you know, the efficiency study raises a number of questions. In her report, Sherelle has deferred to the board to deal with them.
I defer to the board to, to deal with, there's, like, we can't, there's nothing I can do with the city charter or city code, whether you're operating under one or the other. So that's where, and I'm hoping that we can work together on this. But I don't think my role specifically is to deal with the charter. I think that's a board and, and city discussion that I, that I hope will continue.
I, I agree, yeah.
That's not my role. But it, it definitely needs to be.
You know, what, what might be helpful for us?
I hadn't quite finished. So since these matters are, you know, a little bit complicated, responding to sort of oral suggestions in terms of endorsing recommendations or not can be difficult. So, I mean, it seems to me also helpful, at least to me it is, to be able to put my thoughts down in writing in terms of recommendations. I'm not saying everybody has to do it, but it seems to me it, it, it can forward the sort of discussion. I mean, I think in the end, hopefully there will be some series of recommendations coming out from the board, hopefully by consensus. If not, you know, by other means, on some of these questions. And so, you know, Laurel, if there are, there is an opportunity to sort of draft something, I mean, to me, that would be helpful, but it's not a, you know, necessity. I'm sorry, Patsy, go ahead.
Yeah, I just think that it might be a good exercise for the board to, at our meeting, next meeting, to, to go through the bylaws and, and the differences of opinion between the state, the state charter on libraries versus the public library situation here in Norwalk. So that we all have a clear understanding. Because, you know, a couple of months ago, I referenced a letter I had from 214, which you weren't aware of, you know, for some reason. So I think that's a step in the right direction that we, we talk about that. And then, then take the next step, whichever way, whichever way we go with ideas of how to resolve the, the confusion, because it's not clear and it, it's, it's very difficult for us to function effectively for the library with that confusion in place.
So, so if, just to make sure I understand it, because I, if, if my understanding is accurate, I think it's a good idea that we would have a discussion at the board meeting, similar to tonight's discussion, in which we would raise issues and discuss different opinions about them, but not seek to have any formal outcome of that meeting. But to enhance each other's understanding of these issues and the state law, city code, and then. Okay, I think that's a good idea.
Good.
And I think tonight's discussion was very productive.
So our, our next meeting is our annual meeting?
Well, there, there's no place for an annual meeting in the bylaws as I read them. Our next meeting is the second Thursday in July.
Well, there's, there's, it's a good place to start to look at the bylaws and.
I think that's.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's good. So we, then, in terms of my response to Laurel, then it seems to me it might be appropriate after the next meeting, maybe to think about putting our thoughts in writing or something. But have a rather open and free-flowing discussion about these other issues, the way we've had tonight about Sherelle's report. Any other comments that people would like to make?
So, is for the foundation, are you also opining that there's no annual meeting for the foundation board?
I, I don't know the answer to that question without looking at whatever documents we have. So if Janie or somebody else wants to enlighten us, please do. I, I have not looked at that question. I've spent a little bit of time on the phone with the Law Department about the aquarium donation. Given the, let's say, rather, lack of complete direction in the city ordinances about how to handle certain types of donations. So, but I have not looked at the foundation issue about an annual meeting. But we'll certainly have a foundation meeting in, in July.
Well, we had an annual meeting last year, so I, I'm confused. So we need to look at that and comply with our bylaws.
Okay. Well, we'll see what it says and we'll call it whatever it says. And we'll take up also at next month's meeting, the document that Janie circulated that had been drafted. And we'll take up also at next month's meeting, the document that Janie circulated that had been drafted by the Finance Committee.
I can't talk, hello?
Yes. Please go ahead.
Hello? Oh, hi. You guys, I'm so sorry. I wanted to jump off because I lost my internet. I just, I'm so sorry. I have one more pretty big question. On the Evergreen Report, it did mention about the, the library having a strategic plan for 2019 to 2022. And then it talks about, while the plan, it says, quote unquote, while the plan has a goal to develop new partnerships and collaborations, it does not include goals or objectives with the community services department. So my question is, is will there be like a, a big meeting to like, talk about how, like, what's changing with the community services department? Like, how do we align with them? Is that also really important?
Well, we've invited, and I think it'd be helpful to have Lamont part of a discussion.
Yeah, I'm just thinking if it's in this report, yeah, it's starting to get more aligned. Okay, thanks.
And I think that'll be part of our discussion next time too, because that was, you know, like that, the, that's a big part of the Evergreen Report. You know, the relationship between the two.
Okay, well, I think we are at the end of our agenda. Unfortunately, we, unfortunately, we can't add new items to the special meeting. And therefore, would there be any objection to a motion to adjourn? Ralph, thank you. Any discussion? If not all in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. Thank you, Patty. The objection and our special meeting is adjourned. Thank you for a very productive discussion today.
Thank you.
Bye, Jeff. Thank you.
Thank you.